Yeah, yeah, yeah. Holders, hold, hold. This way, girl.
Good evening and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board, Tuesday, November ninth, the year two thousand and four, here at the Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Ask Dr. Tracy for the roll call, please.
Raymond Bowles.
Here.
Nancy Novlin Clayburg.
Here.
Nancy Craig.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
John Lyons.
Here.
Carville Taff.
Here.
Charles Vaughn.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Andrew Canacci.
Here.
Linda Burlet.
Yes.
Ann Mayer. Rich Collin.
Good evening again and welcome to everyone to the Portsmouth School Board meeting. Just a couple of notes, in a few minutes, we're going to recognize this year's state championship volleyball team for the state of New Hampshire undefeated. And I'd like to, after a moment of silent reflection, ask that the team captains, please, come forward to the mic during that to lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag. During our moment of silent reflection, if you would please keep in mind Jean Kerrigan, teacher at the school system, who is having her own battles with health at this time. And also, we had a sad passing a week ago tonight of Bruce Fox, a member of this school board for a number of years, who supported all child activities in the city. And both Charlie Vaughn and myself attended the funeral last Thursday. And again, if you would keep his family in your thoughts tonight as we rise for a moment of silent reflection. And then again, if the young ladies who are the team captains would come forward to the mic and lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, we have the secretaries who report the approval of the October twenty-six, two thousand and four minutes. Is there a motion?
I move that they be approved as written.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Under correspondence, we have a great letter from Ted Comstock, executive director of the New Hampshire School Boys Association, in regards to our culinary arts program that did an outstanding job. I know that Dr. Tracy and Walker, myself, attended this, the northeastern regional national school boards meeting, and a great time was had on the boat. And I'll tell you, we have so many students to be proud of, and faculty, these students did an outstanding job. I have received letters from Washington DC, from those in the national school board's office, Ann Bryant, the executive director, and others of how impressed they were with that. They would have never known that these were students that were serving this meal. And the variety, and they were even more impressed when they learned that these students prepared this meal. So, is there a motion to accept this letter and place on file?
So moved, and Mr. Chairman, if I might, to my motion, ask that a letter of some appreciation to Diane Pinkham be sent by the superintendent and a copy be placed in her 201 file.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'd like to mention also that Ms. Pinkham was one of my students. That's something that goes along with the whole. At the middle of high school.
So you had one that came out pretty dang good there, Charlie. Diane did an outstanding job, I'm telling you, people were just dumbfounded in what we do. Yeah, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Number two, copy of my letter to Councilor Ned Reynolds regarding the middle school. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second. Mr. Chairman, if I might. I think it was appropriate, Mr. Chairman, that you, in a very civil and intelligent sort of way, address the issue that was raised by Councilman Reynolds. It's important for all councilors to appreciate the fact that we on the school board, although we are subservient to a certain extent financially, to the city council, that we give our deep attention to every deci- many decisions that we make, if not all. And that any kind of a dialogue that we can create with them in a civil sort of way, in an understanding sort of way, is appropriate.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further discussion? I also would like to just thank Peter Torry for helping me draft this letter. Great respect goes to Peter in making sure that we cover the grounds that was requested by Councilor Reynolds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Number three, talk about being able to do some celebration. Superintendent, our own superintendent, Dr. Lionel Tracy, has been appointed to the Education's Northeast Regional Advisory Committee. I'd like to just speak on behalf that this is a great moment for the, not only the Portsmouth school system, but the state of New Hampshire, because to have the voice within this group, similar to the group that I worked with in Colorado, this allows New Hampshire to have some foresight in what's going on, both in No Child Left Behind and AYP. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Again, Dr. Tracy, we congratulate you for being accepted and being appointed to this committee.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Letter from the Portsmouth Anthonyum requesting information on the middle school. Oh, we didn't take a vote on the, oh, we did that. A vote on the superintendent's appointment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Letter from the Portsmouth Anthonyum requesting information on the Portsmouth Middle School. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move in second. We didn't even read it, where is it?
You can tell me about that one? It's a request, and I'll just throw a caveat into this, is that we discussed this, and this is an expensive document. And I know that the Anthonyum does a great deal for the city of Portsmouth, and has done a great deal for us. My concern is, is that anybody requesting further, because they are available at the public library, they are available at the school systems, is that there is a cost, even though it's fairly small, in our tight budget season, I don't know if we do not want to make sure that any further copies, or including this copy, that the fifteen dollar publishing charge be passed on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the Anthonyum, and I think John Lyons is too.
Yes, I am, Charlie.
As I am.
And, well, whoever it.
Who is it?
Yeah, let's just not leave anybody out, Charlie.
Who is it? It has, in this feasibility study, has any mention of been made of the library of any sort, or the building of the library? They're just inquiring, is that correct?
That's correct, they're just inquiring about this, about, it's the feasibility, usability study that we accepted in September, is what they're requesting. And we have had a number of requests.
It's like that, just two of them. One is a facility, and the other is a program analysis. It's a, it's a complete document with diagrams and charts. It does not really mention the library whatsoever.
Let me grab John, and then Carville.
How much does this study cost?
The whole study, I forget, but the individual books are a total of fifteen, is that correct, for both?
Yeah, but we ordered some additional copies so that they could be made available at the library, and we would have some at the school. The, the, the cost of a, of these combined is approximately fifteen dollars.
Mr. Chairman, this request is more than simply making a copy available for the public. It specifically indicates that they're looking to hold it as a piece of local history relating to the, the school board. As a member of the Anthonyum, and if I step down, I'd be willing to pay the cost if the board thought that would be more appropriate.
And I think I'm just mentioning that as we move along, and the, we've had, we've had, Peter's had a number of requests on this, and Peter's stood ground and said, we cannot just hand these out. But being the Anthonyum that does garnish and hold history, we wanted to bring this forward. I mean, I'd say Peter's had at least four requests that he's told me about, and again, we would like to provide it, it's a matter of that, then if we do, do we start charging for everybody, to be fair? Carville?
Yeah, well, John took the words out of my mouth. I think, you know, we, we all know this is a repository of our history, and I think a copy gratis would be in, in our best interest, and then, quite frankly, and then, you make an excellent point as well, if we're just going to, you know, honor a request, why then there may be some fee involved.
Correct.
Thank you.
Motion to accept and place on file, and then in motion, within that motion, to allow Peter to forward the copy, the two-book copy of the Portsmouth feasibility usability study. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, is further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Any further correspondence to be brought forth tonight? I have a couple, and I'm going to ask for some assistance, because I always wish that the school board members would, that we have school board members present when we're invited to banquet, we have the Portsmouth High School Boys Soccer Banquet, I have an invitation for that, I can look and see, it's next week, Tuesday, November sixteenth, at the Elks Club in Portsmouth on Jones Ave. If anybody has an interest, please let me know, I'd love to try to attend, I'm not sure of my schedule then. And then, we have an invitation that I received for the girls volleyball, it needs to be replied by tomorrow, for a November twenty-second, five-thirty banquet at the Ashworth. And again, I, I'm not sure of my schedule, because I've just received these today, and if anybody has an interest, I'd love to send them along to represent the board, because I think it's important. So, again, those are just two requests that have come through, and I appreciate them. At this time, is there any other correspondence to be brought forth? Seeing none, go to item three, before we go into the public commentary, which we have nobody signed up, so we have plenty of time for this. I'm going to ask that the state championship volleyball team, please all come to the podium and start, and introduce yourself, tell us your position, and tell us what year you are, and then we'd like to just say a few words to you, if you would please. So, we can start right from the beginning. Ladies. Thank you, don't be shy, the first one has to go.
My name's Carly Barton, I play defense, and I'm a junior.
I'm Jackie Billock, I'm a right-side hitter, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Whitney Dupree, I'm a senior, and I play right side.
Hi, I'm Maria Nukas, I'm a senior, and I play outside hitter.
Hi, I'm Jackie Burnett, I'm a defensive specialist, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Dow, I play outside hitter, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Jen Yunus, I'm a defensive specialist, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Amy Menugian, I'm a setter, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Casey Murray, I'm a right-side hitter, I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Brittany Cummings, I'm a middle hitter, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Julie Prudhomme, I'm a middle hitter, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Anna Nukas, I'm a setter, and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Amy Warren, I play defense, and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Samantha Verrill, I'm a setter, and I'm a freshman.
Ladies, first of all, we want to congratulate you, not only for being outstanding athletes, but also being great representatives to the city of Portsmouth. I had the great fortune of attending four of your games this season, including the great final this past Saturday, and to watch you represent the city of Portsmouth was an outstanding moment in Portsmouth's history. Not just because you were undefeated, and not just because you took the state championship, but because you all worked as a team. The teamwork that you presented to us this year shows us not, again, an undefeated season, but it shows us that each and every one of you played a vital role, role in accomplishing something that had not been done in Portsmouth in a very long time. First of all, to be undefeated, but also to now bring a state championship. We are proud of all our athletes in the Portsmouth school system, whether they have a complete winning season, or a season that is not so stellar. They go out there, they represent us. It is a rare occasion for any school system to have students of your caliber and your physique to be able to come back and bring us a state championship plaque, which we'd all like to see at some point here. So, I'd like to say at this point, we will, as you know, we, last year started out filming only a few games, that, a football, and then a couple of basketball. Well, this past season, we're very fortunate that Channel Twenty-two, with Alan Brady, and Howard, and the other producers that they have, along with Guy Hampson, we were able to actually film three of your games, and the last game was filmed of the state championship over at Pinkerton Academy. We will be presenting you in the next couple of weeks, copies of that winning championship game, that you will be able to keep on DVD and play for whenever you sort of feel like you're down and out. To say, because, you know, being undefeated, someday, when you do lose, you throw that DVD in, and you'll say, you know, there are those times. So, we will be presenting those bef- at least by the time your banquet comes along, so that you'll have those memories of this championship game, because going to five games, and Nashua did an outstanding job, and respected you ladies so much, that it made us awful proud as, as school board members that were there. I know that Nancy Craig was there, I know that Dr. Tracy was there, and I apologize if I didn't see anybody else there. But again, we'd like to also ask that Caitlin Dow, Maria Nukas, and Jackie Burnett, please come forward, because you ladies were recognized today, I believe it was, or last night, that you are the all-state champion team of volleyball players. And again, if you have anything to say, we'd like to come forward. All pointing fingers. You girls are not that shy, saw this out in the. Well, we won't put you on the spot. Say your numbers.
We feel quite honored, and we're really happy with the state championship, and just thanks for all your support and the DVDs.
Well, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ladies, thank you for being, again, not the state champions, and not undefeated, but thank you for being our students, and being the representatives you have been for this season. Well, pass it this way, any board members wish to ask the volleyball team, any question, Nancy?
I read in the paper that you all think the world of the coach that you've had for the past few years, and I think that we need to give him a round of applause.
Oh, where's the coach? He hasn't been in.
I apologize, Roy is just that type, he sits, he's nice and quiet, and, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't flaunt, because Roy, you know, has, the girls went last year, shouldn't be unnoted, last year, they, they made it to the championship and, and lost. And again, you, you showed great pose and so forth last year. But having a coach like Roy, Mr. Coach Swanson, has helped us so much, and helped you ladies mature into players that are getting, like Caitlin, recognized, I know many others of you are getting recognized by universities out there. And again, good luck to you in both your academics and your athletics. Nancy?
I, I wasn't finished, Kent.
Oh. Well, thank you for bringing up Roy, I didn't see Roy, he was quiet in the back.
I also would like to acknowledge our athletic director, Mike McKinney, and our principal, Forestry and Stell, and also the parents, who, I know I have three teenagers, so parents, we schlep our kids, I'm sure, for the rest of their lives. So, a big, big thanks to the parents who, you know, were right there behind their daughters, you know, taking them places, supporting them, and I'm sure that's been an exciting time for the parents as well as the kids, so congratulations to all of you.
Ladies, enjoy it, and never forget it. Good luck to you. You don't trust them with it down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Should have held them last, so we had some of the. That's nice. At this time, under the public commentary session, I have nobody signed up, is there anybody that wishes to speak? If not, I declare the public commentary session closed at this time. I believe Nancy, you wish to recognize an individual?
We have two staff people that we're very proud of, they have recently received two significant awards. The first I would like to mention is Dave Cook, he is the head custodian at Don Dero School, and he received the partnership award from the PTA, the Parent Teacher Association. Every November, the New Hampshire PTA has a convention, and it was last Friday, and that's when Dave was recognized with this award. And I just happen to know Dave because my children went to Don Dero, and he is truly a team worker, and he was recognized for, you know, his ability to cooperate and work with staff, teachers, students, anyone in the school. He's always there to help set up for an event, break down for an event, he's always there to find you the light bulb you need, or the, you know, electrical outlet to plug in the popcorn machine or whatever. He's just a great individual, and we're very proud that he was honored by the state parent teacher organization. So, Dave, congratulations, and hope you're there for a long, long time more. The second one is Mike Anderson, who is a teacher at Don Dero, he usually loops between fourth grade and fifth grade, I don't know what grade he's teaching, is he, what is he, fifth? Okay, he received the Milcom Fam- am I pronouncing that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Milcom Family Foundation Award, which had a prize of twenty-five thousand dollars with it. And this is given to an individual who has exceptional educational talent, evidenced by outstanding instructional practices in the classroom, school, and profession. He also showed outstanding accomplishment and strong, long-range potential for professional and policy leadership, and he engages and inspires a presence that motivates and impacts students, colleagues, in the community. He truly is a teacher that goes above and beyond, and we're very proud of Mike for receiving this award. So, two of our staff people, two people that we're very proud of.
That award was for twenty-five thousand dollars, which was presented by the Commissioner of Education, Nick Donahue, who actually came to the school to award it, so it's a really significant award.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, John.
We thank those individuals for their outstanding efforts, and again, representing us well. And I believe at this time, Ray, did you have an individual that you wish to, in regards to the new heights program, discuss?
Well, thank you for recognizing me. I did read an excellent article in yesterday's local newspaper, which in turn caused me to call the superintendent, and find out whether or not we could have, by inviting her here, the relatively new director of the new heights program. I have felt that, over a long period of time now, that the new heights program is simply superb in terms of what it does, and what it manages to get our kids to aspire to. And I read the article, and I thought it would be great if in turn, in some way, the superintendent could arrange, that we heard from her, perhaps exchanged viewpoints on, on our kids, and so I just thought that perhaps we could benefit from that, and that's why I called the superintendent yesterday.
Right, and we'll ask superintendent to see one, would be a good time, it's Tracy Tucker, who has taken the reins of the new heights program, so we'll see when that would work, to have Tracy come in and, and have a discussion with us.
Good. Do it. Thank you.
We are at item four, recognition of staff and students' requests, we have a request for a student to attend a three-day work session, and I'll ask that Forrest join us at the podium.
I'm here tonight on behalf of Diane Pinkham, the culinary arts teacher at the high school. The Culinary Institute of America, probably the premier culinary school in the nation, has actually invited Diane and a student to attend a three-day series of workshops about the school, to understand the, what they have to offer, and to bring that information then back to, you know, back to our students, and more fully make them aware. The student that Diane has selected is, is pretty much perhaps known as her top, her top student over the last couple of years, and that's Ryan Breallett. And he really is center to many of the public things that you see the culinary program do over the last six or eight months, to a year, year and a half. And we're very proud to, you know, ask you to approve his attendance at this three-day event. The Culinary Institute of America is picking up all the costs from ground transportation from Portsmouth to the Hudson Valley of New York, and all the activities that are taking place while they're there, from roundtable discussions with students and professors, through, you know, the visiting FDR's mansion at Hyde Park, and various things that go along with that. So, we're really looking forward to, you know, being able to support Ryan in this, and hope that you can give him your support as well.
Questions regarding the trip? Wendy, you got any input?
All I know is that we had to prepare his application, he's trying to get in tomorrow, and we expect that he will have an interview, and hopefully, by the time he comes home, we'll know if he's in or not. So, we're fairly excited.
Questions regarding the request, it's in your packet this evening, if you did not see it, and how it will work with both Diane and Ryan to attend, so.
I think Dr. Tracy has a copy of Ryan's itinerary, too.
Okay, just the one. Quickly, I'll just go to it, it's Wednesday, November tenth, which is right around the corner. Arrive at the hotel by motor coach, dinner at Restaurante Caterina di Mancio, I think I mispronounced that pretty well, return to the Holiday Inn for the evening, eight fifteen in the morning, you will attend, bring a guest to the campus. Breakfast with Jerome Bernard Burns at the boardroom, group photo, admission, presentation and demonstration by Danny K Theater, at, at the Danny K Theater, campus tour, classroom experience, view of the grand buffet, dinner at the American Bounty Restaurant, I think we all need, you bring doggy bags home, I think, I think there's about fourteen doggy bags you have to bring.
All those restaurants, Kent, are on campus, and the kids and CIA operate those restaurants, and they're open to the public, so it's kind of a big deal. We went as parents, and we couldn't even get into the restaurants, when we took Ryan to look at the campus, so it's, it's really quite exciting.
Great, great, and then on Friday, they depart for the FDR, FDR Home and Library Tour, FDR Home and Lib- Library at Hyde Park, again, lunch at Wallace Center, FDR property, culinary arts, I guess they eat a lot. Panel discussion with students, and then dinner, and again, they depart on Saturday morning. And so, we do need a motion to allow for this trip to go. Ann?
I move, we accept this wonderful offer, and congratulations.
Move in second, Nancy?
What do we, this is just out of curiosity, I'm sure, we're such a specialized job, I'm wondering, how do we cover Diane in the case of her absence? Is there somebody that we have?
I'm sorry, there.
How do we cover Diane?
We will engage a substitute to cover Diane in her absence, yes.
Is there, do we have somebody, I mean, she's got such a specialized position that.
As with any, you know, as with any position, certain substitutes have worked in those positions, and teachers are comfortable with certain substitutes, and I'm sure she's requested.
And I'm sure she's requested somebody that she's comfortable with and also has left, you know, the kinds of activities a substitute could do with the program in her absence. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate there'd be any, any issue there.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations again, Linda, to your son and Diane. She's just looking at it. They're trying to pronounce the restaurant names now. Under four other, I have a couple. I'm going to request formally here at the board that we work with Patty to execute a letter of thanks to Assistant Mayor Alex Hanson for his support for the last eleven years to the city of Portsmouth and to the students and to the school departments. Alex has given us a great deal of support, including that building, the library. And as Nancy Craig reminded me, we had a great contribution from Alex, working with the, both the Dondaro and New Franklin School traffic patterns because of his work with the Safety Committee, Traffic and Safety that Alex did. But I would like to have a letter drafted and that we all sign. And I ask this in a motion to be sent to Alex Hanson, again, for his outstanding contribution to the students faculty and the school board of Portsmouth, New Hampshire.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We thank Alex for all his hard work and wish him good luck. Second letter I'm going to ask in request is a letter to go to a former employer of ours, who was nominated and is the State of New Hampshire's Superintendent of the Year, former Assistant Superintendent to the Portsmouth School System, is Chuck Ott. Charles Ott was nominated and will be going, I believe it's out to Albuquerque, New Mexico. I heard on today's news to be recognized when they do the state awards on this. And again, I'd like a motion to send Chuck Ott a letter of congratulations for his outstanding efforts in the state of New Hampshire.
Come on.
Moved and seconded discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, we congratulate Chuck Ott on his outstanding accomplishments. That moves us to item five, under professional nominations. Dr. Lister?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one nomination we'd like to present to you this evening, and that is for John Herman, who we would like to employ as a science teacher, earth science teacher at Portsmouth High School. And he will be replacing Tracy Gilroy, who resigned last school year.
Come on.
Moved and seconded discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any other personnel business to be brought to us tonight, Dr. Lister?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Under item six, committee reports. I was unfortunately absent due to a commitment. I will hand this over to Peter at this time, who has given you the preliminary notes. I know that Anne was there.
Feel free, Anne, if you want to.
No, Peter, feel free. You did a great job.
I think the minutes pretty much speak for themselves. There was a, there was a meeting a week ago, Wednesday, October 20, 27. I think it's probably our, I don't know if we count up the number of JBC meetings, but it's got to be somewhere in the, in the fifty or sixty meetings that have been taking place since the, since the project began. Project is on, is, continues to be on time. We are headed towards completion of what would be the original renovation plan for much of the, for much of the old building that was going to remain, being completed on or before December 30, 31st. There will be parts of that building that'll actually be occupied sooner than, sooner than that. I think some of the classrooms upstairs, maybe to allow foreign language, to begin to think about moving back to where its final home is going to be, may well be right around Thanksgiving time. But the good news is that part of the project is moving towards, towards completion. And if you go by it, you begin to notice the front, the new front entryway is beginning to take shape, which will, which will change, I think, the appearance of that building quite, quite a bit. The Crete Tech area is, is, will, will continue and is going, is ongoing. It will continue throughout, in a, in a certain fashion throughout the spring and over next summer. What is, has started is, around the back, they have begun to actually construct the cinder block part of the, of the new, new wing that'll house architecture and expand construction trace. And that becomes quite evident. Some of the paving has been done and so on. Also, just recently, the kitchen was turned over to the cafeteria staff so that not only is the cafeteria as a room being used, but now the kitchen itself can come on, can come back online. I think it's going to be a phase up because there are a lot of new pieces of equipment in there that folks do need to learn how to operate and how, what, how they work best and so on. But a lot's happening, and I think the long wait of this project will begin to bear the, some of the final results here over the, over the next couple of, couple of months. But also point out that we did bring to them, you know, the requests to redo some of the fencing. What they've asked is that we postpone, given it's gotten late in the season anyway, and package that with a complete fencing plan, which I think is probably a good idea, and bring it back as, for final consideration, once we, once we see where the other parts of the project are going to come in. And beyond that, it's just a, just a course of events. We talked about commissioning and paid some bills, and home in about an hour.
Further questions?
Just for my own information, but as far as the classrooms that are currently being occupied by the foreign language rooms or teachers that have been scattered throughout the school, what is exactly supposed to be planned for those classrooms?
Well, I believe, I believe those, although I think maybe Forrest would be, give you a better answer than I, about what they're going to be used for. I think they were originally, many of them were intended to be computer labs. But there was a certain number of labs, there was a lab for each, for each department and, realizing that we need to put foreign language in some of those places, that they were not fully outfitted. But I think that's the, the ultimate intent, although, you know, there's always, there's always good ideas as to what other use could be there as well.
Further questions in regards to the Joint Building Committee? Uh, Ray?
Mr. Chairman, what I wanted to do, as I've done perhaps twice over the last three years, I wanted to compliment the people participating, and they've changed somewhat on the Joint Building Committee and especially the recording of their activities. To my certain judgment here, the recording of their activities has been extremely accurate and extremely useful to somebody who's trying to keep up on, on this. And I wanted to make sure, this may be the third time I've done it over time, that in turn, that that's given proper recognition, that being the actual recording, accurate recording and distribution of the minutes. Back when I came onto the school board in early, what the heck was it, 2000, and this activity was just getting underway, I used to make it a point to go to the early morning meetings of the Joint Building Committee, which usually took place then, and I think they still do, at seven thirty in the morning. Am I right on that?
Quarter of eight.
All right, well, okay, all right. But in turn, as time went along, I think I attended three in a row as an observer. But then I began to feel comfortable. I began to feel comfortable about the way that the members were participating, and especially comfortable as to how our chief executive here, Mr. Torrey, and the person recording the activities. And so, from that time on, I have not felt the urge to go and listen because I can read these accurate summaries and keep up with it. And I believe that I have, and I just want to make sure, absolutely sure, that people know that this activity from beginning to end has been one great activity, namely, the Joint Building Committee, the staff support what they receive, the contractors and subcontractors which will come into play, and in turn, perhaps in some ways above all else, the citizen representative, Robert Iafolo, who was set on this from the very beginning. I'm so pleased that this major activity has been conducted in the way it has and has been accurately portrayed. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ray.
Ginny Kelleher is her name, and she is absolutely a saint when it comes to stuff like this. And she has, just, just, just for, out of interest, these minutes got done, she's going through becoming a grandmother for the first time, and, and has divided interests. Nonetheless, everything is done and everything's where it's supposed to be. Ginny Kelleher.
Charlie?
Thank you. It's, I was reading with interest the write that Hunter asked in filling their payments. This is paragraph number five. How much money will be left in that, in that retain, what is it called? Retainage fund?
As Peter looked at that, there will actually be three funds that may have some funding left. There's the owners, there's the builders, and then there's this retainage. So, there's some people, we don't, we give one number now, and that Peter can answer. But again, there's a possibility of other funding that might be left over, that we will have to decide as a board, and I've mentioned this to the JBC in the previous meeting for this one, we remove three tennis courts and never replace them. Is that the priority? JBC will probably have a list for us, I would say, in late December, early January, of things that were on a wish list but did not get on. And this board will have to have a work session on how they wish to prioritize them with some cost on that, I guess. And again, so the answer to that, I'll let Peter get on that retainage one. Do you know how much it costs?
Typically, on a construction project, you start off with withholding 10%. Call it retainage, call it just earnest money to make sure that the job is completed in the way that we want. Hunter, early on, recognized the length of this project to be of significant nature and that there were a number of phases that it would be inappropriate for us to be holding 10% for, let's say, the work done on the athletic building that's been done for two years. And ultimately, Hunter, they themselves hold 10% on their subcontractors. And so, they, they received contractual language that permitted them to make periodic requests to release retainage on areas and parts of the building that had been in use, that have, that have gone beyond the concern of us being, being concerned that they might not have completed the project in the right way. Currently, we are holding on the main project, over a million three, on, of retainage on that part of the project. They are, because we have occupied a major portion of that building now for six or eight months, have used it and have a sense for that it's, it's worthiness and frankly completeness. And so, they have made a periodic request for retainage release. In this case, on that part of the building, they are asking for a rather substantial release of over $800,000. That would still leave us on the project, of which is about $4 million from being complete, still holding about $500,000, which is, in actuality, about 10% of the project that hasn't been completed yet. And I think we're all going to be somewhat in agreement that that's appropriate. We're not going to release any retainage on the, on the work being done on the Crete Tech Center yet because it is still a work in process. But that's kind of the process which they go through, and, and, you know, it's, it's all been covered legally and contractually.
Thank you, Peter. And I think the answer, further on, Charlie, we will, not only should I discuss, you know, how we use that money, is that I think there are legal things that, because the state matches us on the, on this with the 50%, is that we can't transfer this money back. We have to use it to complete the project itself. So, I mean, I don't want to have confusion about, either from the city council or from the public, that this money, that if there is money left, has to be prioritized on the things that didn't get done. And I would say, that is, it's a great point to bring up, Charlie. I would say we'd be having that meeting in, in the first couple of weeks of January because basically, we are under completion, we will be completion by February 1st, which, again, I'm looking for volunteers to help put together, I know, I got you, Diane, to have this. But to do that, I don't, we also need to say what we're going to expend any, any funds. We are coming in on time, and we are coming in on budget, and it may be slightly under budget. But again, when we say under budget, I want the public to know that there were things that did get taken away. And the one that comes up of the three tennis courts, they need to be looked at to come back on somewhere on the property. Some field, I think, priorities out there.
Gym floor.
Gym, ah, the gym floor, that was a big one, too. So, again, we're not being thoughtless with this money. We are being very cautious with this money, and it will be this board's decision of how to do that with input from faculty. Further questions on the JBC? Good timing question, Charlie, I have to tell you. Seeing nothing? Motion to approve, oh, no, that's a preliminary, so we're all set. Other committee reports to be brought forth? No other committee reports tonight. Under new business, any new business to be brought forth this evening? Nope. Continuing business. Under continuing business, I have two items. Does anybody have any items prior to that? One is, again, I want to thank Diane Pinkham. I know she's got a lot tonight, but the National School Boards Association was here last week. And that week, we also had an outstanding speaker. I know that both Peter, Nancy, Lionel, myself, got to hear George McChain, President of the Year, and Charlie was there, too. George McChain speaking in regards to Brown versus Board, versus Board of Educa, Brown versus the Board of Education, and talking about the group. We all sometimes think myself that it's an individual, but this was a group of parents back at a very trying time for those of minority races to stick out their necks and really be heard at this time. And George did an outstanding job of giving the fair and balanced questions of then versus now. And again, I wish we had had a much larger audience there, but George did a great job with the small audience we had. And I also want to thank the boys choir, who came in and sang patriotic song to begin us, to begin the evening. But again, in your packets tonight, the cries went up together, Brown, E T A L versus Board of Education, then and now. And again, it's a...
It was Kansas, Mr. Chairman.
It was Kansas.
It was Kansas.
Topeka, Kansas, that's right. That's what the, it was Topeka, Kansas is where it was. But everybody, a lot of people believed Little Rock, Arkansas because of that, and it was not. It was Topeka, Kansas, seven years prior. And as, as George said, you know, up until about 1967, until Forrest, busing was, came into place and gave the whole history line to it, up to today where people were surprised that there were still, as of date, seven school districts under federal jurisdiction because they have not completely complied with that of this decision by the Supreme Court. So, interesting discussion. And again, you have a great article, and I want to thank Bob Lister for providing the article. Next, we're looking for volunteers. January is going to be an extremely busy month. We're looking to put together either an evening or, as we've done in the past, a board retreat for the board members. Anybody interested, please see me in the next week so we can start to plan a time and a date. We have an extremely busy schedule, going into a very high budget, coming off a high budget session. But we also will have big hurdles on this year's budget. So, again, this retreat is extremely important, that we take, I know, less than six hours to get together and figure out our strategies for the year to come, if anybody's interested. Any further continuing business to be brought forth? Under financial, item nine A is going to be placed on hold. Carla Veen, Carla Rice, had got a hold of Peter and was then able to come this evening and wants to review some of these things. We will get a hold of her in the near future to, again, present this proposal at her convenience. Any questions? Item nine B, we hand it over to Peter.
Just annually, when the, when the city manager and council announce a tax rate, typically I've put together a little, a little summary for you that breaks down, that breaks down the tax rate into the various, the three main components, a school of which has a city, a city portion and then a state contribution number. You notice those have changed a bit because of the change in the funding law, but nonetheless, the, the school portion of the rate remains at a, at over eight dollars. It's, it's just reflective of what the manager announced about a week and a half or ten, ten days ago. Yeah. It's, it's that portion of the tax which is collected locally, but is indeed part of the statewide property tax.
Questions in regards to this?
Carville?
Is the state portion of this tax fluid at all? I never quite understood, you know, on this last vote up there, when they determined the, you know, the next phase of educational funding, what cycle it was on, in other words, what's the fiscal cycle.
When they made the vote on...
In other words, when, with the new administration, and could, could they vote two months from now to change that, and will that make this a fluid number? I guess that's my... I guess that's my question.
Carville, just to go into that, they were in, when January came, we were, in June of 2003, they made a vote and had it so that, basically, our tax rate would have been a different amount. And we got word, Lionel, myself, got word in September of last year, 2003, that this was going to probably fail somewhere along the lines. I said March, it didn't happen until May. I had the M right, but that was it. So, when you say it's fluid, you know, there is always a possibility something's going to change, because what was there in April or March of this past year was not what happened June 1st. As of June 1st, we walked into something different. And at that, they didn't have a solid number. So, I think that's where you're asking, is that fluidness of that number is not tightened until, from my understanding, until the state coffers or understand and how their balance and where it is short, and again, under the receiver donor, who actually it is. There are donor towns, or towns that are now what we might even call neutral, that just surprise you, that are getting less money. The town of Allentown got less money, and a town of greater wealth, or thought of greater wealth, like Bedford, got more money. So, again, when you say fluid, I don't believe until the final numbers come out, and correct me, Peter, is until they put that there, and I think that's even temporary for that time and place.
So, I guess my question is that this is our best estimate as to the current rate?
Well, this is what's going to hold right now.
What's going to hold right now, yeah.
Again, it comes June this year, it could drastically change again.
This is based upon what we know, and the way the law reads currently, but obviously, that's subject to review and change at Concorde. Thank you.
Further questions in regards to the tax rate? If not, item 9C?
The October financial report is in your packet. We are currently at about 36.5% spent or encumbered. It is, that is on target and where it ought to be. There's nothing at this point that particularly alarms me or that I would want to call your attention to, but happy to answer any questions.
Is it possible that, did all the teachers that needed it get their shots for food? Thinking of the substitute, it's a new concern that came into the state today, and I was wondering if we could get hold of some of it, because I think, you know, some of our teachers, although at six foot, it's 65 and above, don't you need a shot?
Not lying.
You mean, given my age, Mr. Vaughn? I'm not sure how many still need those shots or didn't get them, but I also saw that news release, and I think that we ought to at least inquire as to whether or not some of that's available for us, and we'll see our nurses to have them do that. It's a good point.
Thank you. I have one other, I'm under financial, too. Peter? Just interesting, telling a little side conversation with Carville, it reminded me that the audit for the city's books, which includes the school department, is, it has been completed, at least the fear work has been done in there, in the process of writing it up and so on and so forth. The school department was, this year, every year, the audit takes one area of city government and performs a more in-depth audit, a bit of an operational audit and so on and so forth. This year happened to be the school department's year, and they did choose to look at some of our additional funds that typically are just managed by school principals, called the activity funds. There is going to be, and I think it's high time that it be done, frankly, an additional audit of those accounts, not because there's any perception of wrongdoing, but simply as a matter of, there is a fair amount of money that goes through those accounts on an annual basis. I audit them, but I think it's healthy to have an external audit also review what's going on there, because what will come out of that are some good suggestions on how to help manage what our, you know, sort of, not casual accounts, but accounts that a principal keeps that does need, that is not their primary function. So, that, we will hear more from that, I'm sure, as time goes on. But I did want the board to be aware that that has been agreed upon and will be performed by the city auditors. It's in conjunction with the current audit, but also as considered to be an additional audit that will take place during the course of this year. I'm sure you'll hear when the results come.
Maybe I should have brought this up, the committee reports, but I thought it was more appropriate here, thinking in light of what Peter just said. As a member of the joint budget committee, members of this board should know how the city reviews budget is going to be significantly changed pursuant to directive of the city council. All city budgets will be reviewed under a performance-based system, which the city manager is currently putting together. There's a form that they're looking at, but how budgets are reviewed and looked at is going to be changed drastically, and we're going to have to look at that carefully as to how we respond and how we support our superintendent in appropriately participating in a good faith way with the city, while at the same time, making sure that we are able to jealously maintain our independence as we work hard for all of the kids of this city. So, maybe it's even something we should look at as a board, to have a little bit of a work session on that down the line, but it's a significant change.
John, I think that'd be a big topic, I believe, if we can get this board retreat in January, that I think it's, that's shoes right into where we need to see how that would work, and again, then bring it back to the public, even though that is a public meeting, to say, this is our goals. I mean, I agree. Thank you, John. Mr. Vaughn?
I missed the last budget meeting. John, did they suggest that the city business administrator is going to present to the boards, different boards in the city, how this type of budget is going to be applied, and what the drastic changes are going to be? Is there going to be any kind of public presentation?
Yes. They actually, I thought the, first, I thought that the tone of the city manager was perfectly struck. He, I think, tried to allay the initial fears that folks might have in this change, that we were going to be working together. I think he indicated that we weren't going to go overboard on this approach, but he was quite clear that this was something that was being driven by the city council, that it was being driven by the city council. They put together a format that's used in some other communities that do a performance-based budget. And then, the way I interpreted it, is that the basis that we would be judged against would be something, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Superintendent, that we would participate in determining what the criteria are against which we would be judged. Of course, in my mind, it's awfully difficult to have a performance-based budget with the school department. What are you measuring? How do you measure kids from year to year? What we do in Portsmouth, and how all of the citizens, and I hope the city council listens to everybody, not just one group that may have the city council's ear, overwhelmingly, the citizens of this city have gone out of their way to support education, and we have made choices to do some extraordinary things for our kids that produce students like the volleyball team that was here, that are student athletes, they're both. So, I'm, we can't judge what we do in Portsmouth, but what they do in Rochester or anywhere else. So, I don't want to give the wrong approach. I thought the city manager went out of his way to indicate that this was city council-generated, but that he was going to try to work with all the departments, but we're going to have to be participants in this, and again, be very careful as to how the process proceeds.
And I'll just interject, because I did attend, Charlie. One thing that the city manager pointed out, I believe, two and possibly three times, is that he made this statement, John, that, well, like the school department has done in the past, because he referred to that, we already have done some performance-based presentations to the council in the past. He made that point at least twice and maybe a third time, saying that we were already on target on that. The one area that I discussed with Peter on the way out that day, and haven't had the chance to talk to Lionel, but again, when we talk about performance-based, which, job that I just left recently at FedEx, that's exactly what we did, what I did, is that the performance based on this, the one thing that we don't do, and we should do probably, is the efficiency of the mechanics of our schools, and how efficient the buildings are. So, I think that's one area we could probably improve on, and give them an outlay of how efficient or non-efficient our buildings are.
In what way?
Energy, light, water, usability, you know, whether our buildings are fully, you know, when they're usable, you know, I think there's, to a degree, we can indicate. We now have a high school that's up and running, and, you know, we can do a projected that X amount of corporations and nonprofits and profit groups want to rent that building. Like we've pointed out, Yonkers closes, and now we have a venue that many people would like to use because of the small auditorium, because of the classrooms, because of the dining room. And again, what that costs us and what that, what efficiencies that has towards the school department. It may not be a perfect plan, and I think the city manager actually said that. He knows this is the first strike at it this time, to go ahead and discuss, again, performance based on these areas. We've always done it with our faculties. We've always done it in the way that we outweigh what our faculty is per building.
Well, I appreciate those comments. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, you know, tell the board that a performance-based budget hasn't always been a whirling success. And there's a lot of experts out there in their particular area, and that's all they're thinking about, is their particular area, heat, lights, and so on. So, I agree with John, you know, we have to really be on our, be a concern that, you know, that some of the people on the city council, especially some new members that might be coming on board, don't think that that's going to be the solution to raising taxes, or lowering taxes. I mean, I want, you know, I don't want to say anymore, or I might get exercised.
I think you're right on, Charlie, and I think this is very important for us to discuss of how we go into this budget. Right now, as we know, the superintendent's working with all the budget makers to come to present to us, and, you know, every year, this budget has a new twist to us, and none of it gets any easier. This becomes another nuance that we have to work with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Chairman?
Ray, I'm sorry? I would tell a member Vaughn that I was there, in my role, assigned role of being a member of the joint budget committee, and endured, indeed, my colleague here has given an accurate portrayal of what we heard and some interpretation of it. I'm inclined to be just a little reserved about this, because through the years, in one way or another, at various levels of government, private business, nonprofit activity, the question of a program or program planning budget and/or a performance budget, in contrast to the traditional line item budget, has come up from time to time. And it's been my observation over time, that no matter how hard we try, and I shall certainly cooperate as one person, no matter how hard we try to put a definition into what we're calling tonight a performance-based budget, in the final analysis, we're going to get back down into what the public understands. And as a matter of plain practical fact, the public understands the so-called line item budget, where they, we cost so much last year, it's going to cost so much for the percentage increases. If we can explain it in terms of performance, that's one thing. But, on the other hand, I'm not against it, I'm not going to go any roadblocks, Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you that, okay? But, on the other hand, I am just skeptical about whether or not this may be a worthy thing in the final analysis. I'll cooperate, but I'm skeptical. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other financial business to be brought forth this evening? Seeing none. Next agenda items, just to let you know, November 23rd, after Bob and Nancy had done cooking a million turkeys, we will be meeting at the New Franklin School. Lionel's going to help him put those turkeys. The New Franklin School. Also, I think in your mail, you receive the usual pass. Thanksgiving dinner is coming up, so please try to attend that. Nancy, you have that down?
Seventeenth at 11:30.
Seventeenth at 11:30, that's next Wednesday. Hey, I got that, I can do that. Any other items that you wish to have on next time? Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
No, I want to thank Peter for this letter to Mrs. Michael Coffey about the property that these people want to put their fence on. And although I like item H, I really feel that if some agreement is reached, that there should be some statement in there, that these people, or the city officials, whoever, will notify the school board and have our input at that time, that you imply this, Peter.
And I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, absolutely, it would only come with, first of all, the advice and consent of the school board, and ultimately, any agreement on city property would have to go through city attorney and city council. I think it's just simply a willingness on his part, that at some point, if he would choose to want to make that proposal, that, you know, would we listen? I think we'd listen, you know?
Oh, yeah, we'd listen. But a one, one little inch, the next is a foot, the next is five feet.
I know.
I mean, okay, thank you.
No, I agree, that's a very nice letter that you had written, and very professional to state our side of the view of that property. So, thank you. Other business at this time? I just want to say that a week ago, we had elections. We are now all one unit again, we are not divided into our different camps and so forth. And I want to thank John Lyons for getting out there with Martha and presenting, especially on the school side, issues that face us. And I hope our continued relationship with Martha and John over the next couple of years continues to, again, in good faith, to represent the best interests of the students and children of the state of New Hampshire. And again, I want to thank John publicly for bringing many items, and also taking the willingness to run for an office. Thank you, John.
Had a wonderful time, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate my opponent, and we all need to work with her to make sure that we help her with all of the issues that face the city and the region, particularly the educational issues. And I guess this is where I was meant to be, working with all of you, a job I love, and will continue to advocate for children on the state board of education.
And I too congratulate Martha, and again, both the work that she did in the, for running for those offices. Nancy?
I would like to remind everyone on the board that Jesus Christ Superstar will be happening at Portsmouth High School. It's our drama department, the Portsmouth High School Drama Department. It's a wonderful production, I've seen parts of it in rehearsal. The dates are the 18th, 19th, and 20th of November, I think it's 7:00 PM. I don't know, we'll have to check on that. And then, it's also on Sunday afternoon, the 21st. And you can purchase tickets at the high school, or you can go to Prescott Park Arts Festival Office, which is on Marcy Street in Portsmouth. So, if everyone could come to one of those four performances, I don't think you'll be disappointed.
And again, one last thank you to all our student athletes, as the fall season has now come to a conclusion, all of them representing us out there. So, again, our fall athletes and winter sports are right around the corner, if you can believe it. And the band this year did an outstanding job representing us. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?